Roll call. Ms. Jarvis.
Here.
Ms. Annapolis.
Here.
Mr. Grillo.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Ms. Alghieri.
Present.
Ms. Bono. Ms. Bono.
Here.
You can say Ms. Malinak. Ms. Malinak. Oh, excuse me. Ms. Malinak, sorry.
Be resolved that the Lynn Hurst Board of Education, of the township of Lynn Hurst, I'm sorry. Whereas James Bono, who has served as a board member, who had served, we start again. Whereas James Bono has served as a member of the Board of Education from January 2015 to December 2017. Whereas James Bono has also served as president of the Board of Education for the calendar years 2016 to 2017. We, the members of the Board of Education, express our appreciation of his faithful, conscientious, and industrious achievements, and extend it to him, our sincere wishes for continued service in his reelection as a board member.
Now, you've picked up the twenty seven he is. It would notice.
By heart.
By heart. Ask you for a roll.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Ms. Alghieri, four. Ms. Malinak, four.
Ms. Annapolis, four. Mr. Donovan, four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
And Ms. Bono.
Four. I understand. Thank you. Now, I'd like to read. Be resolved that the Board of Education, of the township of Lynn Hurst, New Jersey, whereas Beverly Alberdi served as a member of the Board of Education from January 2015 to December 27. Sadly, Beverly Alberdi passed on December 27, 2017. We, the members of the Board of Education, express our appreciation of her faithful, conscientious, and industrious achievements, and extend to her family our sincere sympathies, and appreciation of all she did to serve the Lynn Hurst Public Schools in her many roles at the district community center. Along with her Board of Education, I think government board assistant for something like forty-three years. And she is going to be sorely missed. Thank God. Do we have one of the members of our staff? Well, I think they're two or three.
So, we're going to present this to the girls who ran last week. The Board of Education has to show them, presented to Beverly Alberdi, her services rendered to the public schools of Lynn Hurst, New Jersey, 2015, 2017. Some have monuments of stone. Some have books written about them. Some have taken fame on the field of battle. Some are renowned for their statesmanship. Some acquire greatness through commerce. All these shall pass away. Those who serve our children live on and to be terminated. Their works shall never die.
Any new members?
Aye.
Alright, the next part of the session is the siena via, the actual swearing in of the all. So, I need, Ms. Keith, please go forward.
Aye. Usallam, we swear. That was important to the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And that will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people. Aye. Usallam, we swear. That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law to the office of a member of the Board of Education. And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-19. Okay, yeah, ready?
Pursuant.
RS-19. Four dash one. Nor disqualified due to conviction of crime or offense listed in NJHS-18A-12. That I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all duties of that office according to the best my ability. Welcome aboard.
The next new board member is Mr. Abusado.
Peter, come here.
Aye. First name, Joseph Marcus Scadaro. Usallam, we swear. Usallam, we swear that I will support and support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. That will bear and will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people. So, help me, God. And next one. Aye. First name, last name?
Joseph Marcus Scadaro.
Usallam, we swear.
Usallam, we swear.
That I possess
that I possess
the qualifications
qualifications.
Described by law
described by law
for the office of a member
for the office of a member of the Board of Education. Of the Board of Education.
And that I do not
that I am not I do not
disqualified
disqualified
as a voter
as a voter
pursuant to
pursuant to
RS-19.
19.
Four dash one.
Four dash one.
Nor disqualified
nor disqualified
due to conviction of crime
due to conviction of crime
or offense listed in
or offense listed in
NJHS-
NJHS-
18A-
18A-
12 dash one.
12 dash one.
And that I will faithfully
and that I will faithfully
impartially
and partially
and justly perform and justly perform all duties
all duties
of that office
of that office
according to the best
according to the best
my ability. So, help me, God. Congratulations.
Aye.
Aye.
First name, James Bono. Usallam, we swear.
Usallam, we swear.
That I will support
that I will support
the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution
Constitution of the State of New Jersey. State of New Jersey.
And I will bear
and I will bear
true faith
true faith
and allegiance
and allegiance
to the same
to the same
and to the governments
and to the governments
established
established
in the United States
in the United States
and this state
and this state
under the authority
of the authority
of the people
of the people.
So, help me, God.
So, help me, God.
The next one. Aye, your first name.
Aye. Aye, your first name.
Usallam, we swear.
Usallam, we swear.
That I will possess
that I will possess
the qualifications
qualifications
described
described
by the law
by the law
for this office
for this office
of a member of the Board of Education
of a member of the Board of Education.
And that I will not disqualified
and that I will not disqualified
as a voter
as a voter
pursuant to
pursuant to
RS-19.
19.
Four dash one.
Dash one.
Nor disqualified
disqualified
due to conviction
due to conviction
of crime
of crime
or offense
or offense
listed in
listed in
NJHS-
S-
18A-
18A-
12 dash one.
Dash one.
And that I will faithfully
and that I will faithfully
impartially
and partially
and justly perform
and justly perform
all duties of that office
all duties of that office
according to the best
according to the best
my ability
my abilities.
So, help me, God.
So, help me, God.
Welcome aboard.
That concludes the vicinity. We now open it to the reorders. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions, may so indicate now and separate motion for each of the expected actions will be entertained. Okay, roll call first. Ms. Malinak. Ms. Jarvis.
Here.
Mr. Annapolis.
Here.
Mr. Abusado.
Here.
Mr. Grillo.
Here.
Mr. Donovan. Ms. Keith.
Here.
Ms. Alghieri.
Present.
Mr. Bono.
Here.
We will now open a floor for a nomination and election of president.
I would like to nominate Mr. Bono as president, second.
Okay, roll call. Ready? Ms. Malinak.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Mr. Annapolis.
Four.
Mr. Abusado.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keith. Ms. Alghieri.
I still believe that's for one step.
Mr. Bono. Here to say. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions, may so indicate now and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be retained. We have nomination for election of vice president.
I would like to nominate Sue Alberdi.
Second.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions, may so indicate now and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Okay, roll call. Ready? Ms. Malinak.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Mr. Annapolis.
Four.
Mr. Abusado.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keith. Ms. Alghieri. Mr. Bono.
Four.
Be resolved that the Lynn Hurst Board of Education approve the attached New Jersey Board of Education and JSP Board of Ethics pursuant to JSA-18A-12.
Second.
So, there's a map. We're going to roll for it. Each board member, take your packet to read off one line and go on a tape and pass. So, we will start with Ms. Alghieri. Correct.
Athletic Detroit to the New Jersey statute. They swore that school board member shall abide by the following board of ethics. A. I will uphold and enforce bold and rules and regulations of the state Board of Education for orders retained to schools. Desire change or sharing brought about only through legal and ethical means. B. I await decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children to developing and training of schools with any legislative meaning of all children regardless of their ability to raise three, six, or twelve kids. C. I will refine my board actions to policy making, planning, and tracing, and I reflect different policies only after the board has consulted those who would be affected.
I will carry out my responsibilities not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well run.
E. I will recognize the authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board.
F. I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups for to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends.
G. I will hold confidentiality and confidentiality of all matters pertaining to the schools which, if the schools were necessarily injured individuals for the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and then, in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school.
H. I will vote to appoint just qualified personnel to have consideration for recognition to Chief Administrative Officer.
Aye. I will support and protect school personnel in proper performance of their duties. Yet, I will refer all complaints to Chief Administrative Officer. And I will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of administrative solution.
That concludes the reorders. We will now adjourn.
Second.
The meeting is done, Jurist. Now, we'll have the regular board meeting in about ten minutes. We'll be trying to settle into the day, so we can start, okay? Ms. Malinak.
Here.
Ms. Jarvis.
Here.
Mr. Annapolis.
Here.
Mr. Abusado.
Here.
Mr. Grillo.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Ms. Keith.
Here.
Ms. Alghieri.
Present.
Mr. Bono.
Here.
I give notice of this meeting has been provided by the following meetings. Annual notice was sent to the Herald and News Record to South Bergen Island, the Observer, the Township Clerk, and posted in the lobby of the Town Hall and Board Office, setting forthcoming scheduled board meetings and public meetings of the board. Any new business? We need to approve, if you want to do this, it can happen separately.
Yeah.
Okay. We need a motion to approve the November twenty-seventh meeting.
Second.
Second.
Roll call. Ms. Malinak.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Mr. Annapolis.
Four.
Mr. Abusado. I stand. Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keith. Ms. Alghieri. Ms. Bono.
Four.
Okay, now we move to the second one. A motion for December fourth meeting, number thirteen.
Second.
Second.
Roll call. Ms. Malinak.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Mr. Annapolis.
Four.
Mr. Abusado.
I stand.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keith. Ms. Alghieri.
Four.
Ms. Bono.
Four.
Be resolved the recommendation of the school business administrator that the Lynn Hurst Board of Education approve the attached committees of the Lynn Hurst Board of Education. That's your packet. Number two. Be resolved the qualification appointed. The Don Levine of Construction and Resources as the owner of the Lynn Hurst Board of Education effective one December, 2017.
Second.
Roll call. Ms. Malinak.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Mr. Annapolis.
Four.
Mr. Abusado.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keith. Ms. Alghieri.
Four.
Mr. Bono.
Four.
Finance committee, Chris.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of finance facilities and district planning committees may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the attached actions to be taken into hand. Hearing none. Following the Friday, the latest financial management action of the Board of Education signed in one fourteen, will be adopted.
Second.
Roll call. Ms. Malinak.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Mr. Annapolis.
Four.
Mr. Abusado.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keith.
Four.
Ms. Alghieri.
Four.
Mr. Bono.
Four.
Education and curriculum.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of education approved of the committee, may so indicate now a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. I make a motion that number one be accepted as read.
Second. Roll call. Ms. Malinak.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Mr. Annapolis.
Four.
Mr. Abusado.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keith. Ms. Alghieri.
Four.
Mr. Bono.
Four.
Policies, rules, and regulations. Mr. Abusado. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of policies and rules, regulations, committee, and so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion to approve items one, two, and three.
Second.
Roll call. Ms. Malinak.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Mr. Annapolis.
Four.
Mr. Abusado.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keith.
Four.
Ms. Alghieri.
Four.
Mr. Bono.
Four.
Athletic.
Athletic student activity, suit.
Any board member who takes exception to any following listed actions under the category of athletic student activities, substance abuse, and any may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion that one and two be adopted as read.
Second.
Roll call. Ms. Malinak.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Mr. Annapolis.
Four.
Mr. Abusado.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Mr. Donovan. Ms. Keith. Ms. Alghieri.
Four.
Mr. Bono.
Four.
Community relations and safety and security, Joseph.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of community relations and safety and security community, may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I do believe that items one and two can be adopted.
Second.
Roll call. Ms. Malinak.
Here.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Mr. Annapolis.
Four.
Mr. Abusado.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keith. Ms. Alghieri.
Four.
Mr. Bono.
Four.
Rachel Melchon. She's going to work. Good. Ron.
Clear.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of personnel may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. I'm going to make a motion that one through fourteen and sixteen through twenty-one be adopted.
Second.
Roll call. Ms. Malinak.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Mr. Annapolis.
Four.
Mr. Abusado.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keith. Ms. Alghieri.
Four.
Mr. Bono.
Four.
I'm going to make a motion that fifteen be adopted.
Second.
Second.
Joseph. Roll call. Ms. Malinick? Ms. Jarvis?
Four.
Mr. Anthenopoulos?
Four.
Mr. Abuskado?
Four.
Mr. Brillo?
Four.
Mr. Donovan?
Abuskado.
Ms. Keith? Ms. Alchieri?
Present.
Mr. Vona?
Four.
Roll call, we're going to do that.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't know if anyone is aware, but, um, Sean Mrs. DiMarco has forfeited her, uh, bonus pay of twenty-nine thousand dollars this year because of the predicament of Marin. And I just wanted to put that out there publicly in case we missed it in here in minutes because I think it's a, uh, an anonymous, uh, move on her part. And, uh, you know, how many people want to give up thirty thousand dollars? Okay, not too many. So, on behalf of the board, I want to thank you and the community. I guess we're part of the grocery store, so I want to thank you. I also at this time want to publicly welcome Aaron and Joe to the board. And I hope that your years on the board here are as great as we've been. Uh, we have a great board and I know you guys will fit in extremely well. They, it's a very hardworking board. We argue, we holler, we scream, but in the end, uh, we come out friends and we don't let any of this get away. Okay, so I want to welcome you, Aaron and Mr. Abuskado, welcome back. It's been a long, hard, torturous year. You were well. I appreciate it. You were highly involved in it.
So, on behalf of, of, um, myself as the superintendent, Mr. Bicic as the administrator, as business administrator, um, and all the administrators, faculty, staff in the district, um, a sincere warm welcome to Mr. Abuskado and Ms. Keith and certainly welcome back to Mr. Vona. We look forward to another excellent year. Um, I will say that we started out the calendar year feeling very strong and, and extremely confident, um, especially given the many circumstances that we faced this fall. Um, I would be remiss if I did not, um, acknowledge the challenges and, and the difficulties that, that we faced recently. Um, but I would also be remiss if I did not share with you the community, um, the strides that we had made. And thanks to Mr. Bicic, um, numerous hours along with members of his staff over the holiday break, um, over some weekends and into many evenings, um, with me. We are really at a, at a very in, in important and significant place in identifying our, um, financial condition. And it's certainly looking very, very positive, um, almost to the, to the point where, you know, we, we're extremely confident that the plan that we're putting forward tonight and, and what will then go to the county for approval is the plan that is going to satisfy the deficit that was identified and, um, move us forward with, with complete coherence to continue running this district very successfully. Um, my sincere thanks to the supervisors and principals. Prior to my announcing anything about forfeiture of my PD and merit goals um, at our holiday luncheon, they presented to us that they wanted to give back to the district in any way that they could. So, anything that was contractually owed to them via PD or via cost, they've decided to, um, not accept for the remainder of the year. We turned that money in the amount of over thirteen thousand dollars back to the district um, and still pursue some of those either at their own costs and their own travel expenses or seek alternative PD that they would be able to get free of charge, um, in, in, in other ways. So, it's my sincere thanks to them. Also, it's the faculty and staff. They've been excellent in working with us through this. And, um, again, we're at a really, really great place. So, we start two thousand eighteen not only with a new, um, board that's bound to be successful but on a path that is sure to prove itself very successful for not only us but the community. Um, in addition, we are in the month that we will be finalizing our, um, bid specs for the referendum work. And, um, we are so excited to know that at this time next month we will be out to bid and, um, awaiting responses from those contractors that are interested in doing this work for us. And, uh, six weeks thereafter, be expected to, um, put shovels in the ground and, and get this going. So, we have a lot of exciting things to come